Welcome to the Delaware Muncie Metropolitan Plan Commission Regular Meeting. If you can, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Borchers?
Here.
Mr. Brand?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Curly? Mr. Dishman?
Present.
Ms. Hensley? Mr. Landis?
Here.
Mr. Leach? Ms. Owen?
Here.
Ms. Seif?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
So we have eight present, seven voting members. We do have a quorum.
Okay. This time I would entertain a motion for approval of the June 2025 meeting minutes. So move.
Second.
Discussion or questions or comments on minutes from June? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Landis?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Seif?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, seven yeses, so that is official action of approval of June meeting minutes.
Okay, just a couple of brief reminders before we hear our first case. If you would, please make sure you have your cell phones silenced. When your case is read, one person can please come to the podium. They'll state their name and address. After the applicant has had an opportunity, we will allow for those in favor and those opposed to speak. When we do, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, that you are respectful, and that you keep your comments to the case itself. It does take five votes for official action, and we make a favorable or unfavorable recommendation either to the city council or to the county commissioners for final action. Okay, first case, please.
MPC thirteen dash twenty-five Z jurisdiction, city council, being a consideration of an appeal filed by Bradburn Realty LP, five-five-oh-one West Oakbrook Court, Muncie, Indiana, requesting a change in zone from the R-three residence zone to the B-C community business zone on premises located at two-zero-one-one West McGalyard Road, twenty-three-hundred block West McGalyard Road, thirty-one-hundred block North Winston Drive, and thirty-one-hundred North Winston Drive, all in Muncie, Indiana, as more accurately described in the application.
Okay, who's here to represent the applicant?
Good evening, board. My name is David Carnes. I'm an attorney with Dennis Winger in April, located at three-twenty-four West Jackson Street here in Muncie, Indiana. And I'm here in representing Bradburn Realty LP, as well as the buyers who are purchasing the property, which is South Tree Development. And I have with me tonight Jacob Grady, who is the project manager for development for South Tree for this project. What we're requesting is that the zoning get changed from R-three residence zone to the B-C community business zone. We looked at the property for development, we looked along McGalyard and the properties along McGalyard, especially those that are directly adjacent to McGalyard, a lot of them are variety business zone. And we looked to see whether that was an appropriate zone for this. As we were doing some research, we located a consent to vacation of plat restrictions, conditions, and limitations, I guess Bradburn Realty back in two thousand and six, as they were working with this property, specifically as the developer went to the neighborhood and they discussed it with them in two thousand and six, and actually had over eighty different residents sign a consent to the vacation of plat restrictions to remove this property from the plat. And as a part of those plat restrictions, it stated that they were seeking a rezoning of the Bradburn property from the R-three residence zone to either community business zone or major trading zone. And then each of the residents that agreed were paid compensation for that agreement, and there was a document that was recorded with the Recorder's Office for over eighty, some of the property owners in the addition, signing a consent and escrow agreement stating that the owner would agree to support and not to oppose the rezoning of the Bradburn property from R-three residence zone to the community business zone or to the major trading zone. So that's why we pivoted. We looked at the community business zone. At the time of zoning, it's not really appropriate as to what is actually going to go there, but we wanted to kind of share that with the Planning Commission and neighbors. So what the idea for the development is an autism therapy center. There's not a specific building plan, yet we have presented a proposal for what we think might be the building plan. I know I've seen four different versions of that project itself and what it might look like as it gets developed in that space that we are requesting to be rezoned. We felt like the community business zone was the best zone. It was a good buffer to the community. It is, allows for a limited business zone. It also allows for different things that would fit this actual use as this autism therapy center for the area that's being developed.
One question that comes to mind as you're reading that, so, and I'm not a lawyer, so forgive me if I didn't hear something correctly, but what you were describing that was something that was signed between Bradburn and eighty of the people in this neighborhood in two thousand and six? And those eighty people in the neighborhood agreed to what at that time?
The language in that document specifically states the owner agrees to support and not oppose the rezoning of the Bradburn property from R-three residence zone to community business zone or major trading zone, and agrees to sign all documents deemed necessary by Bradburn to accomplish such rezoning.
Okay, but of those eighty people, how many, do you happen to know how many of them still live in that neighborhood?
Of those eighty people, I would say the houses that are there, when I look to see, we went to the Recorder's Office and we pulled a list from Laredo of all the different property owners that signed those documents agreeing that their lot would not object to that. And I, there has been a lot of transition since two thousand and six. There's been a lot of the owners that have owned the properties that signed and accepted consideration for that that have moved since that date. So it would be probably at this point, a handful of people that might still be there, either for or against after almost twenty years.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Let me ask you this, sir. When were these individuals compensated to sign that paper?
Yes, they were.
And when the property changes hands from one person to the next, is that relayed to those people that that agreement had been entered into?
It was recorded with the Delaware County Recorder's Office, and it would have been reflected on the title work when they purchased the property.
When they purchased the property, they would have known.
Correct.
Okay, and what was the reason that they did not pursue it at that point in two thousand and six? What happened?
I think that's a good question. They were working on the project, and they ended up selling to the apartment complex. So the major trading zone was for an issue if they had a ten-acre property and they wanted to turn it into another strip mall like Northwest Plaza.
Right.
But they ended up selling it to the property there for multifamily use, and it's now an apartment complex. So then the remaining properties that was left from that agreement on this side of the street and on the other side of the street were part of this as well, but it was never developed and it wasn't, there was never a buyer was a place for sale until this project.
So let me ask you this from a point of law. Does, what, what you're asking here tonight, does that carry a lot based on what they did in two thousand and six as far as paying those property owners at that point? Is it, is it something that carries on indefinitely, infinitely, when in agreement? And I know you're an attorney, and I know you're an attorney, and I'm just searching out an answer to this question. Does that carry on infinitely, even though these individuals that may be sitting here tonight don't know what in the world you're talking about? Because they, they bought a place and nothing was, was said to them when they bought it. Does that carry on infinitely forever?
Obviously, I represent the buyers that are trying to rezone the property, and my argument would be that it would run with the land. If they signed it and they paid compensation for it, then it was a valid consent and escrow agreement. It would, they were paid, I'm looking at this one, two thousand dollars for their agreement to sign the document. And that would have, since it was reflected on the title work, if they had raised any questions to their realtor as they were doing their title search, most properties when they buy a house or otherwise have a time period where they'd get the title search, and then they have ten days to respond if they have any issues with the title that's there. So they would have had a time at that point to pull this document that was recorded under two thousand and six, or this one's two-four-two-oh-nine.
Okay. Could I have anything?
Yeah, one thing to add, you know, may impact, the buyers were on notice subsequent to this of this agreement. However, it does not bind this board as far as the rezoning is concerned. You get to make your own decision based on what people say. People are free to object if they were not someone that signed this agreement. Of course, they were on notice at the time they bought their property. So this board gets to make your own, own decision about the impact of these documents, but they were validly recorded and certainly signed perhaps by some predecessors of the current owners. But you get to make your own decision on this request.
And if I understand it correctly, the eighty people that signed that in two thousand and six, they were just agreeing that they wouldn't oppose it?
Correct.
That, that they just, they wouldn't come here and speak against it and oppose it?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know how many people or how many lots or owners are in that neighborhood? Like, is eighty? Is it, is it fifty percent of the neighborhood?
It had to be over sixty percent of the neighborhood to be able to be pulled out of the process. Yes, it's hard to understand with the lots. There, there would have been approximately two hundred and some lots, but all of that would have been if it had fully developed, and it should be property that is currently the apartment complex would have also been developed into lots. So there's a missing section of numbers that are in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
Ricky, I want to ask you a question. You're in the real estate business. This gentleman just explained, you know, is he on the right track? Is, is it true that this is something that goes on out there and is just a, a common practice?
It's not common, but it's legal, and it's recorded, correct?
It is.
So, you know, it's, the knowledge is out there. And like you said, they had certain number of days to object, and if they didn't, they're, they're standing.
So that could kill a, a deal if a person was buying a house?
Not if they accepted it. I mean...
Right, if they accept it, but if they didn't accept it...
It's going to be disclosed.
Right.
So they have to accept it.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers it enough.
Yeah, it answers it enough, yeah.
You have other questions for Mr. Carnes?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Carnes?
Yes.
On the first page of this consent vacation of plat restrictions, conditions, and limitations, under section two, it lists several lot numbers. Lot eight, eighty-five, eighty-six, two-hundred-and-two, two-hundred-and-three, two-hundred-and-four, two-hundred-and-five, two-hundred-and-six, and two-hundred-and-seven. These four lots that you're asking to be rezoned, are they one of these lots listed in this agreement?
They are.
Okay, that's my first question. Second question is, well, actually, it's not really a question. I just wanted to read this. Another part of this agreement that was put in place in two thousand and six says, "No agreement shall be recorded as evidence of any owner's consent until at least eighty consents have been received and the escrow money paid to the owners as provided in this paragraph." And I think it was your testimony earlier that, that that condition was met.
Correct, yes.
And then it further states that as, as part of this agreement, Bradburn will agree that the borders of the Bradburn property that abuts Belmont Avenue will be screened from the neighborhood by construction of an earth and mound planted with trees before or during commencement of any development. That would still need to take place?
If it would be part of the Bradburn Drive, yes. A lot of that has been already done with regard to the apartment complex as it went along that border, but if there was additional border, then yes, there would be appropriate screening, and that would be part of the variance process, I'm sure, as well.
Okay, and then my final question for the moment is, on the proposed zoning change application under section ten, it says that you notified the property owners within three-hundred feet, but had not personally discussed it. Have you received any feedback from the property owners that were notified?
I have not individually received anything in my office.
Okay.
I believe the Planning Commission may have, but I have not.
Okay, has the Planning Commission received anything from the owners?
Yes, we, there are some things that were included in your packet, and then on your place setting tonight, there was a package that, things that have come in since packets were distributed.
Is that this paper clipped together?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Yes.
I don't have any further questions at this time. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Carnes?
I just wanted to reiterate, aside from the consent, that's just one part of this. We do believe that the board, that this is the highest, the best use for this property. This is the appropriate zone along McGalyard. This is enough. We've tried to limit the zone change as much as possible to meet this property. It's not residential development. R-three is not the appropriate zone for this property, and we really believe that this community business fits in that buffer type range that was agreed upon based, I think that they looked into what would work best for this property back in two thousand and six. That's why they chose it, and I feel like still today that that's the best zoning for this property along McGalyard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this applicant? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this applicant? Please remember to state your name and address.
Okay, I can almost see over this. Sue Wyland, one-two-two-four West Weber Drive in Muncie, four-seven-three-zero-three. I would like to just make a few points about the proposed rezoning. I understand that an autism center or clinic is being considered for the site. In your packets of information, there is a list of five other autism centers within a three-mile radius of the site, including one just a few blocks away on Royale Drive. Furthermore, if this is rezoned and the autism center eventually closes, it opens the door for all the Bob's Tobacco Shop, a tattoo parlor, or yet another gas station. This is a really busy part of McGalyard, and on the subject of traffic concerns and gas stations, I patronize the Shell Station at the corner of McGalyard and Oakwood. There are entrances from both streets. People may turn into the station from McGalyard, but they exit onto Oakwood. You can always tell when someone is unfamiliar with the area. They are the ones trying vainly to exit up back onto McGalyard until someone lets them in. Locals know better. Finally, about the concern of increased traffic through the neighborhood as the only other way to get out of the area and people going too fast. I have a similar situation. I live way on the other side of the area, on Weber Drive near Wheeling. On weekday morning, there are a lot of people going south on Wheeling to be stopped by the traffic light at Centennial. Many turn right onto Bethel at that point, heading toward work at the university or at the hospital. Some people have discovered that they can circumvent the traffic light by turning onto my residential street before they hit the traffic light. They go west on Weber Drive, then turn south onto New York Avenue to arrive at the four-way stop at Bethel. That way, they can get ahead of a bunch of cars. To be sure that happens, they race down Weber and New York, going forty to forty-five miles per hour through a residential area. Increased traffic going too fast through the neighborhood might happen? No, it does happen. I've seen it. For me, it covers maybe fifteen minutes in the morning. For Lane Crest, it will be all the time.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Pint. I am the president of Anthony Northside Neighborhood Association, and I live at the Belmont Edition at nineteen-oh-nine North New York Ave. I speak on behalf of dozens of residents to urge you to reject the proposed rezoning from R-three residential to community business. This request fails to nearly every standard in the basis for the decision under Article thirty-two, Section four-F of the zoning ordinance. Approving it would set a dangerous precedent for our neighborhood and for the city of Muncie. Property values will be harmed. Residents bought homes expecting a stable neighborhood. Commercial traffic, signage, and noise would disrupt the character and the area and lower property values. Community business zoning allows uses that do not fit our neighborhood. This violates basis number one. This is not the best use of the property. This parcel was zoned residential for a reason. Though it sits at the edge of Lane Crest, it is, it is surrounded by homes. Streets and infrastructure were not built to support commercial uses. This proposal is out of character and incompatible with the neighborhood, violating basis number two. This is spot zoning. This proposal isolates a single parcel for community, commercial use and at, at one subdivision, at one of the subdivisions' two only entrances, creating a commercial gateway into a residential neighborhood. It benefits one property owner while shifting long-term impacts onto neighbors. Lane Crest is primarily R-three and R-five. This is a commercial intrusion and spot zoning, violating basis number three. Traffic congestion will increase. Lane Crest has only two entrances and exit points for a hundred-and-forty-seven homes. Streets are already congested, especially during rush hour and stadium events. Adding business traffic would push streets beyond capacity. This violates basis number five. This is not good zoning practice. Approving this change allows other commercial uses, including gas stations, restaurants, and parking lots. Approving this change opens the door to future proposals that may be even more disruptive. Once set, this precedent cannot be easily reversed. This violates basis number seven. We respect the intent to provide autism services, but the location is wrong. Safety, congestion, and compatibility must come first. Every point is grounded in your ordinance. This proposal violates multiple standards and puts our community at risk. We are not against progress. We are against reckless, incompatible development that threatens families, homes, and emergency access. We urge you to follow your ordinance, protect our neighborhood, and deny this rezoning request. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew Spurka. I have been a resident of the subdivision now since two thousand and eleven. I fit in a particular situation where I came in well after that decision in oh-six that, an opportunity to be offered, an option for that possible development, I did not even hear that as an option, or that was even a thing, until ultimately the development of the, the development of the, the complex. So that is a big shocker on us, for a few of us, actually. It was difficult to swallow the idea that our, we were kind of forced into that idea for someone who purchased the home, not just renting or anything like that, kind of feel like we're kind of tricked on that one. My biggest concern is, I know it's already been stated shortly here, but is the safety of the subdivision. I have kids that I raised there since two thousand and eleven, and the subdivision has changed greatly just in the last ten years. And we have a lot more kids than we did back then, and they play, you know, they're outside, they're playing, they doing what kids should be doing. And again, this added congestion that this is going to add. McGalyard is, of course, very, very busy. Of course, we've all traveled it. It backs up quite often, if not daily. And when that backs up going eastbound, that turn down into our subdivision is the bypass that it is used quite often. And it's just something to please keep in mind of. As I said, I don't want to repeat what has already been kind of said, but it is a kind of a safety concern that I would like you guys to all please keep in mind. As I do believe something should be built there, but I am opposed of just the blanket, pretty much the blanket check of what this area could ultimately turn into if the proposed idea does fail or it has to change. So I just would like you guys just to please keep that in mind, mainly for the safety of pretty much our youth and the, the, the younger development of our side of the subdivision, which we are currently kind of in. Thank you.
I didn't come with any plan to speak, but just as I'm listening...
Could you please state your name and address?
Think about the neighbor, sorry, Kara Anderson. Did you need my address?
Yes, please.
Thirty-seven-oh-five West Heath Drive, Muncie, Indiana, four-seven-three-oh-four. I do own a property in the neighborhood. That's not my biggest concern. My biggest concern are the residents of the neighborhood, many of whom are either family or friend to me, and the children, as the other gentleman pointed out. When I think about what goes, I'm in the neighborhood a lot because my family lives there, and already there's traffic that is going faster than I'm comfortable with as I'm watching especially the younger children play. And so as I'm listening to all this and thinking about it, I'm just thinking of the visuals of my experience in the neighborhood and what I'm watching. And my mind goes to, I have, my pastor's wife lives in the neighborhood, and she has some memory loss right now and some confusion when she goes to the mailbox many times a day, is what I'm told most recently. Or, and, and so I'm just going to talk about the reality of residents in a neighborhood, not, and, and so she would be one person that comes to my mind, and then my dad suffered a stroke several years ago, and so when he is crossing the street to go to his mailbox, he's, has to be very careful, and it's very slow, and so that's another picture that comes to my mind. And then the kids, ten-year-old grandson, he's hopping on his bike and feels perfectly safe to race down the street or the sidewalk or whatever, and, and I'm not talking about something to where, you know, obviously where basic safety is. But when you move to a neighborhood with the idea that this is a good place for your children, or, you know, this was my suggestion for my parents to live in that neighborhood. So, so those are the things that concern me, that, so it's the traffic. It's not whether or not an autism center, or I'm not as much concerned about that. It's the traffic and the, the in and out of the people that are gonna, that are going to need to, to go to and from the business and how that affects just real people and real lives and real situations that I'm sure are present in every neighborhood. So that's why I'm speaking in opposition.
Erin Ness, what do I state? Name and ad, or what? Yes, name and address, please. Twenty-seven-three-seven Winston Drive, Muncie, Indiana, four-seven-three-zero-four. First, I want to touch on that contract. It does not run with the land. I would encourage him to read it. It begins with, "This is a contract between you and Bradburn." It does not state any intent to run with the land. One that would run with the land must clearly express the intent that the covenant will bind to future owners, which it does not. And most of those that signed that agreement no longer live in the neighborhood. We canvassed, and I know the list who accepted those. Scott Shockley had provided that in two thousand and eleven. And we canvassed and setting those properties aside, the people that still live in the neighborhood that signed it, setting that aside, there's still fifty-one percent of the neighbors currently that didn't sign that, that oppose to this. So I see that agreement is no longer anything that's of use. This is the second time that Bradburn's proposed the same exact rezoning for that same exact property in two thousand and eleven, case MPC zero-four-one-one-Z. The plan commission gave it a negative vote. One big reason, if you read the minutes, was the traffic at McGalliard and Winston. And in the past fourteen years, nothing has changed about that traffic configuration. I let Kylene Swackhammer know of these minutes when we met, and she read through them while I was there. That was the first time that she had, that any, I guess anyone was aware that this is deja vu, and nothing has improved there. There's no guarantee it'll be an autism center. You know, they don't even have to state what use they're planning to do. That some people, they just rezone and then sell later, plan out later. You know, it could be, I mean, it could be an autism center. It could be, it could be anything, gas station, car wash, whatever they can pack there. There, so I researched, so McGalliard's the highest traffic road in Muncie, so that kind of narrows things down. And then the highest traffic section of McGalliard was by the mall. And the second highest was this area east of Tillotson. I don't know what the current count is, but there was a twenty-twenty-four count done of McGalliard just a few hundred feet just east of Tillotson. It was about twenty-five thousand cars a day, a little more than that. And it is now, I would assume, the highest traffic section of the road since the mall's in a lull. And there's no precedent anywhere in Muncie where a residential subdivision. Do I have to stop? Okay.
You can finish, you can finish your thought.
Where a residential subdivision is dense as Lane Crest with only two entrances, contains a business property whose exiting traffic must travel the subdivision's streets to reach a road as highly trafficked as McGalliard without a traffic light. Just east of Wheeling, you got turn lanes, and those neighborhoods are more like city blocks. They got multiple ways to get in and out. We got, it's got two. So tying up one intersection with congestion would be a problem for us. And then by the mall, there is a similarly sized, slightly larger neighborhood, but they've got four entrances and exits, and they've got a stoplight on McGalliard by the mall. So this is, this is precedent right here. Thank you.
Yes, sir, would you go back up? Somebody wants to ask a question.
You stated a lot of facts there in your presentation. The one I'm really interested in is the fifty-one percent. Do you have signatures, a petition from these people?
I, I did. I did. I was trying to scan them all off. They were coming in, you know. Bradburn, they've probably had months to plan out what they want to do. They put a sign on the tree ten days before the meeting and, you know, we gotta move and get signatures and scan, I'd scan them as they come in, and, but I had to come here, it was more important. But I've got them, I can provide them. Which I'll probably might have the city count, you know, city council, I can submit then.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, and none of those signed the agreement.
Somebody gives me facts, I want to see documentation, is what I'm saying.
So I can save that part to the city council meeting if that matters.
Won't matter to me, if I'm not on city council.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition?
My name's Mason Adams. I live at twenty-nine oh-eight North Richmond, right there in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to come and kind of speak as a father and as a person that directly works in the field of autism. I'll just be, let it be known that I do run an autism center here in Muncie. The one that was previously on Royale, we've actually moved a little bit further on Streeter at the moment. And I just wanted to kind of give some perspective on how the field of ABA specifically, which is the science that's used to treat a lot of kids with autism, has changed with the recent dramatic cuts in, in insurance. So we, as a field, are going to be struggling in the next few years because of these time restrictions. Now you can only serve kids for three years, or in the past, there was never a mandate on that. Just reduction in overall service hours. And so have you seen these autism clinics pop up? It's because of like rates that are no longer a reality. And so the thought of another clinic coming up is going to, you know, potentially put out other businesses. But on top of that, right now, I feel like I work in schools, I work with my own business, and I'm in collaboration with a lot of other professionals that do the same thing in the field. And the consensus I have right now is that as the community shrinks, we do not have enough kids with autism to support what is already currently in place with the changes that have come with insurance providers. So I'm not here to promote like my personal business or anything like that, but I just see how the field's shifting and like there is going to be a reduction in the amount of providers that do what I do. It's a very needed thing. Obviously, you hear autism clinic, you think that's awesome. You know, we got something coming for the kids. But the reality of our population is that we do not need another ABA clinic. Like, it's just not going to be sustainable unless we have a huge population growth, which we're not going to have. So, and then as a father, like, I did not plan to stay in the neighborhood that we, we, I always wanted to go out to the country, you know? But as we've lived there the last five years, like, we've come to love this neighborhood. There's children playing, and that's something I grew up with. And, and I don't think that there's a lot of places in our community that have children that are gaining that experience. And so I just wanted to come up here and kind of like give the perspective on like the field of ABA, which is autism clinics. And then also, it's like, I, we love our neighborhood, and if it gets to where our kids can't play, we will move out of Muncie. So, thank you.
I had no idea this was going to happen. My name is Belinda Hughes, and I, my residence is five thirteen Wintergreen Drive, Yorktown, Indiana. I came for the B. Coco store on Wheeling. But I have been an advocate in Muncie for the past twenty years for individuals with autism. My son Gabe is twenty-five. When he was five and diagnosed, my doctor said ABA was recommended, but sorry, not available. So I worked with Ball State, started the ABA program there with two of my colleagues. And we've done a lot in this community. And for, I've always said, for the rest of my days, well, there's air in my lungs, I'll be a voice for my son. So beyond being an ABA business, one thing about, that has been mentioned over and over is the traffic and the increase in traffic. And as a mother and as a provider, my heart drops because I know that I've lived with elopement, meaning my son runs out of the road and, and I have to run and chase him. And as a provider, I have clientele that demonstrate those same behaviors. We have to be at the car to greet them when they pull in. Purposefully, I've purchased properties that are off of the roadway for that particular reason because I know what that's like as a mother. I've lived with it, and as a provider, I've, I've observed it. And the only one we have near the road is for my older generation that is going into the community and is aware of the traffic and understands what those rules are and the safety of that. And they've, they've learned through that process. But I just, I couldn't sit here and not say that the location near McGalliard is a concern and a worry for me as a mother and a provider and as an advocate. It's not something that someone really familiar with autism would be looking at. That's all I want to say.
Ruth Daley, thirty-seventeen North Belmont, Muncie, Indiana, four-seven-three-oh-four. I don't know if any of you know exactly where this is on McGalliard and Winston. Anybody don't, me your mind's eye?
Yes.
This is not a place where you can turn left without some danger. Even right, the right turn is, you've got so much traffic there. If we put a business in there that doesn't have to be anything on this list, it could be a bar or anything. It is going to be really bad for people pulling out there. Also, through our neighborhood at two o'clock in the morning, playing their music real loud. I mean, I'm, we were all young once. And the other thing that I want to say is, several times in the past, we've lived there forty years, I've sent a letter to the city for a no-U-turn sign at that intersection of McGalliard and Winston. And I've never heard anything or nothing's been done, so please consider this request. Thank you.
Okay.
One more person from the same recipe?
Sure.
Okay. Rick, Rick Humphrey, I might need you or Sarah to help with this. My name is Gary Daley, thirty-seventeen North Belmont. I've been in that house for forty-five years. I recall, and the gentleman here was talking about the contract of the eighty homes. And like I say, you, you can help me with that if you think about it. I can't give you all the facts, but I can tell you one thing. Living on Belmont and the few homes on Winston that are facing, right up against the apartments. When you talk about the eighty people that signed that, as I recall, there was two thousand dollars, and we were given X amount of time to sign that. Well, there's what? Maybe twenty homes altogether on Belmont and around on Winston that would be facing that? Okay. We had no choice but to sign that because if we didn't sign it, we were going to be out two thousand dollars. And God bless all the other homeowners around here in that neighborhood. But they would have taken that, and I don't blame them. That just left a sour taste in our mouth. That's enough. Thank you.
Okay, so there was, Kylene mentioned some additional information that was on our, on our spots when we came out. If you, do you guys need some more? Does anybody need more time to review those, or have you had some time to review those? Or do you, anybody need any additional time to review that?
For the record, we did pass out this evening an email from Aaron Neff with several attachments to it. This was received August seventh in our office. We also supplied an email received August seventh from Misty King with some attachments to it. And then also supplied this evening to the board was a letter from Sue Wyland, who also spoke.
Okay, Mr. Cars, do you have some comments?
Yeah, we have some comments. I'm going to go ahead and let Jacob talk a little bit about the projects and what he sees for the project.
Yeah, good evening, Jacob Grady. I'm with South Tree Commercial Development. Will be the developer, address is two oh-one Prospect Park, Petri City, Georgia. This is a tenant that we've done several proj, projects in several different states for. They're a very established firm. They do very tailored one-on-one therapy for people. So typically on a building roughly this size, we'll see twenty-five-ish patients a day, and that's usually one-to-one. So we're talking somewhere in the realm of fifty cars. That's not all at one time that we see coming in at eight AM. It's not like a daycare facility. It's throughout the day, different appointment times. So the traffic tends to be spread out, and it's very focused on one therapist to each patient or child who comes in. So we've had them in multi-tenant buildings, never had traffic concerns with this specific tenant. We're very familiar with them, and yeah, and then I'll let David speak to anything else.
In response to the neighborhood, I've done rezoning requests for twenty-some years now in the community. And no one likes to know what changes are going to occur with regard to a property before the changes actually occur. I've done some work with the schools that have been transitioning, and when you don't know, it, it's difficult. You don't know what kind of traffic is going to come. You don't know what kind of things might arise after that building gets put there. However, this building is, this property is a two-plus, approximately two-acre parcel that is sitting on the corner of McGalliard and Winston. If you drive down McGalliard, which I'm sure all of you have, you notice the fact that the, the properties closest to and adjacent to McGalliard are commercial, and then they're followed up by residential behind them. I had no idea that there had been an application made in two thousand and eleven. Would have liked to have been aware of that as well, but I mean, I, I feel like, is this appropriate for R-three residence zone? Is this property owner ever going to build houses on this property in R-three status? Or is this property that is along McGalliard with all the other businesses that have formed on McGalliard with the properties behind it a more, a better use of this property into the future? If it's not going to stay grass? Looking at the requirements that were stated in Article thirty, Section two, I don't believe that the property owners have lost their values or that this autism clinic, if it's built, or even something else that was built in the community business zone, would cause any effect to the property owners that are back there. Once there's screening, once it's appropriately done, there's corridor standards that have to be met. There's a lot of variances that go into place with corridor standards. This board has essentially put together a really detailed plan on what has to happen before you're ever allowed to construct something along McGalliard, and they have to meet those. It's not spot zoning by any means because you can go down almost every property as either variety business, limited business, or community business that faces McGalliard, all the way down to this spot where this property is at. The same type of traffic issues that you have with a business like this. As you stated, it's only going to be approximately fifty families. They're not going to be coming in at one given time in the day. It'll be a time where they're coming in periodically throughout the day. It's not going to be a huge influx at one point or the other. Once again, those type of issues will be handled when the property goes to the variance process under the corridor standards. When I look at the neighbors that have come to speak today, there's four of them that have come, and I'm not saying about them, but each one of those four that live in the neighborhood that stated their address, them or their predecessor have signed the consents, those addresses that are listed there. And even the last ones, Ruth and Gary, they even stated that they remembered the circumstances and why wouldn't they have taken the two thousand dollars to sign that consent? And they were one of the ones that did, in fact, and are still there from when they signed the consent, passed. I feel like the buffer that is needed for this property, that this, it's appropriate. I don't feel like this is spot zoning. I feel like this is professional use that's going to go there, that's being presented by this buyer. It's probably one of the best ones that could be for this area. And we request a favorable recommendation to change the zoning from the R-three residence zone to this VC community business zone. zone to this B-C community business zone.
You have a question or two? Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Carnes. So, thank you. You answered one of my questions I was going to ask about the number of patients and the traffic. And, and we don't have a layout of your proposed business, but the ingress egress would be on McGaillard Road or on?
There are two ingress points, ingress, egress points on this property. Um, and they're both onto Winston Drive. Well, one is onto Winston and one goes south. That kind of goes into the lot where the part of the complex is and it goes to south and then it comes out once it would turn around onto Winston Drive.
Gotcha. So all the entrances and exits would be on Winston Drive, not only McGaillard?
Either be exiting onto Winston or exiting south and then turning onto Winston Drive.
And then you made a comment that, uh, the agreement that was signed previously, let me get the right nomenclature, um, the, um, consent to vacation of plat restrictions, conditions and limitations that had been recorded.
Yes.
Is it recorded on the deed of these properties?
Those consents are recorded. The deeds come periodically as a person buys the property, either by warranty deed or otherwise. This gets recorded just like a deed in the deed records of the Delaware County Reporter's Office. Um, the consent to vacation of plat restrictions, condition, limitations were recorded as well as the attached document called Consent and Escrow Agreement, which would be behind that. And there's a whole list of the properties that sign those on the system there that I can present to the board if they're needed.
Okay. Stay there for just a second. Mr. Borcher, any concerns with flooding, stormwater, anything in this area? Okay.
And then one of the folks that spoke in opposition made a comment about bar. I just wanted to clarify one thing that is in this agreement. This is Bradburn Agrees, that under those circumstances shall Bradburn project be used for a tavern, adult business, or both in options for offensive use. So maybe that can be made. I would also like to read, uh, the current R-three zone permitted in special uses and, oh, sorry.
I would also like to read, uh, the current R-three residence zone permitted in special uses. And if I don't have the latest and greatest, please correct me. But what I have in front of me says, an R-three residence zone, this is a permitted use, a single-unit dwelling, a government building, a public school, a private academic school, a church, signs of course, accessory buildings, a nursery school, or a childcare center. So under the current zoning, a childcare center could be built on that property the way it's zoned today. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Then the special uses, which would have to, you know, go through another process, just sharing what's in an R-three zone today. A charitable institution, a hospital, cemetery, home occupations, planned unit developments, accessory unit, uh, not available. Uh, those are county-only and country clubs, golf courses, those don't apply. But, so a nursery school or a childcare center could be built there today the way it's zoned, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted, for the record, people understand what can be built there. I'm, I'm good on Mr. Carnes for now.
I do, I do have a question that you might be able to answer. And envisioning that where Winston goes in, is it physically possible to turn, to come out of Winston and go west onto McGaillard or does everybody have to go east?
I don't know.
Like, I can't think of how far the median extends west.
I don't believe it's physically restricted, but I would say that-
I mean, it'd be difficult at any, at any given time, but I just didn't know if it was physically possible.
Speed limit through there is forty, right? I, I drove this just the other day, just to look. Right. So, nothing physically restricted.
So you could physically do it.
Sure you could. If you wanted, yeah, gas and go.
Yeah.
With the median, like you said, stops it, but I'd say it's part of the development and the corridor standards and the going through the development of the building they'll have to meet with Adam Leach and have all that figured out for traffic studies.
I've got time. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Carnes?
Yeah, I have a couple. And they're just small, um, questions. You do have a signed, sealed, accepted purchase agreement subject to the rezoning, correct?
Yes, we do. Correct.
Also, what hours is the center open?
It varies by location, but generally it's about eight, eight-thirty to six PM.
Six PM, okay.
Yes.
And then also, do you, I know it's for autism, but is it, do you, do you work with children that have a, a drug problem or have been associated with a parent that has had a drug problem or anything like that?
No, ma'am. It is specifically focused on autism, but they provide a variety of service, services for them, whether that's speech therapy or occupational therapy. And they have several different, um, practitioners on staff who can help in different areas just to kind of give a full service to each client they have or each child.
And have you done any kind of surveys for the need for, for this center?
I personally have not, but our tenant has and this is an area they've been looking for, for a while and, uh, they feel this is the best property for what they're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else? Questions for Mr. Carnes? Thank you. Okay, at this time I would entertain a motion.
I move an unfavorable request for MPC thirteen dash twenty-five Z.
Hold a second. Hey, roll call, please.
Okay, so just a reminder, this is for an unfavorable recommendation. Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Landis?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sipe?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, so that is seven yeses. So that is official action of an unfavorable recommendation. Um, that recommendation will be sent on to city council. This case will be heard at city council at their next meeting, which is September eighth at seven PM. That is at city hall in Muncie and you will need to be there to represent your case at that meeting. And that also is a public meeting where anyone wishing to speak in favor or, um, in opposition can attend that meeting as well.
Okay. After your case is heard, you're free to leave. You don't, you don't have to stay for the entire meeting. You're welcome to, but you don't have to stay. Okay, next case, please.
MPC fourteen dash twenty-five Z, jurisdiction, city council. Being a consideration of an appeal filed by Benjamin M. and Belinda D. Hughes, five thirteen Wintergreen Avenue, Yorktown, Indiana, requesting a change in zone from the R-four residence zone to the B-C community business zone on premises located at sixteen hundred North Wheeling Avenue, Muncie, Indiana, as more accurately described in the application.
Okay. Are you here to speak, represent the applicant?
Sure.
As the applicant?
I'm Belinda Hughes, yes. Um, this home is right next to the Family Dollar on Wheeling and, um, there's other businesses around it. And, um, my son actually bought it on contract to live there for a while. We started Be Coco about four years ago. Um, we provide sensory items, um, for individuals with special needs. We have grown into, um, providing, um, baby supplies. So we have Be Coco baby, um, for, like, from infant through and the, um, mother too. So we started a dad den. Um, my son just had my first grandbaby, him and his wife. And, um, so we had to do something special for dads too. So we're pretty excited to bring that to Muncie. Be Coco was in our building at Accutec and, um, has been successful. And so we were ready to expand it a little bit and bring it to Wheeling. We're doing some improvements, um, on the home. So we would like your permission to rezone that. It's been used as a business, I believe, in the past, um, but I don't, that's from a previous homeowner, so I don't really have details on that.
What's, what's the name of the, um, business?
Be Co- Be Coco.
Uh, and in your application, you listed limited business hours. Do you have anything or limited operating hours, like?
Right. Um, because we're looking at doing like a shortened schedule of maybe Thursday through Monday kind of thing and focusing on the weekends.
Okay.
Because we do have limited parking. We expanded that area, but maybe four or five cars. I don't look at it being, it's not a huge draw. We do a lot more online, so this is just something for our community.
Anybody else have any questions for Sues?
Will anyone be living there the whole, will it be?
Oh, no one's living there, no. Not now and-
So when you, well, either way, but-
Yeah, not then.
You remodel it and get it ready for business, it'll be a business.
Correct, yes.
Do you anticipate holding events at the business?
No.
Parking. Uh, you said you might have four or five customers a day. What, how many parking spots are there currently? And can they turn around before they pull out, back out on Wheeling or will they have to back out on Wheeling?
No, they can pull out. There's a little alleyway right there too, so.
Alleyway would exit onto Bethel? Or the alleyway exits and then comes per, comes into Wheeling?
Wheeling.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Aileen, is this, uh, parking a problem?
So parking would be examined, um, as the development, concept plans and site plans came in. They would have to follow what's in the ordinance, um, offhand. It's based on the square footage of the commercial building, um, so I don't know exactly what that would be. Um, but they would need to follow what the ordinance states or seek additional variances.
Anybody else here to speak in support of this applicant? Anyone in opposition? With that, uh, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for favorable recommendation.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Landis?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sipe?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
So that's seven yeses, so that is, um, a favorable recommendation for MPC fourteen dash twenty-five Z. So that will be forwarded to city council. Um, your case will be heard at city council at their meeting on September eighth, seven PM in the, um, city hall. So you will need to be there to represent your case. Same thing, it's a public hearing. People can speak in support and/or in opposition.
Thank you. Okay, next case, please.
MPC fifteen dash twenty-five Z, jurisdiction, city council. Being a consideration of an appeal filed by CRU Properties LLC, thirteen fourteen South Brotherton Street, Muncie, Indiana, requesting a change in zone from the R-five resident, residence zone to the CB Central Business Zone on premises located at seven one eight North Walnut Street, Muncie, Indiana, as more accurately described in the application.
Okay, representing the applicant?
Yeah, Jonathan Shambles, uh, co-owner of Coup Properties, uh, fourteen, thirteen fourteen South Brotherton Street is my address.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about what, what we're, what we're doing here?
We're currently building townhomes there. I'm sure you guys drop up and down Walnut, you can see the progress going on there. Essentially what we're trying to do is we have to rezone, uh, that parcel because we're trying to replat. When we replat, that parcel would be split zoned, which would cause an issue with replat. So, uh, we have to change the zoning for that one parcel so we can replat and not have any issues with the zone.
Anybody have any questions here? I do. Yep. Was this part of the original plan?
Uh, we initially, I don't know if you guys remember, I don't know who was here, but we initially came to this commission about a year ago that asked for the same thing and we ended up withdrawing our request because we didn't think we would need to rezone since we're building a residential. Uh, per the code, if you build residential in a, uh, business zone or a central business zone, it falls to the R-five category. So we thought we'd be okay, but, uh, when we went through the replat, we were told we'd have to rezone, so.
So that means you already have structures in progress on these lots, right?
We'd have foundations in place for the surveyor to measure for the replat, so part of the process.
Okay. Mr. Borcher, is any stormwater concerns in that area? I'm good. Anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else here to speak in support of this applicant? Anyone opposed? Okay, with that I take a, uh, entertain a motion. Make a favorable recommendation for MPC one five dash two five Z.
Hold a second.
Hey, roll call, please.
Mr. Dishman?
Yes.
Mr. Landis?
Yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Ms. Sipe?
Yes.
Mr. Brand?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Seven yeses, so that is a favorable recommendation for MPC fifteen dash twenty-five Z. That will be forwarded to city council. You will need to appear there at their next meeting, which is September eighth, seven PM at city hall. Um, same thing, public hearing, um, those can speak in favor or in opposition, um, at that meeting as well. Thank you.
Okay, legislative action.
All right, legislative action. We have some, um, cases that went to city council. MPC eleven dash twenty-five Z, which was Robert Huddleston. Um, that was a zone change from the R-five residence zone to BV Variety Business Zone on two six one one and two six one nine West Ethel Avenue and the adjacent vacated alley and street. That was approved at the, um, August fourth, um, city council meeting, um, with a vote of nine to zero. MPC twelve dash twenty-five Z, James R. Daughtry, from the, it was a zone change from R-one residence zone to R-five residence zone located at the twenty-seven hundred block of North Benton Road. That was approved at the August fourth city council meeting, um, nine to zero. MPC zero three dash twenty-five A, those were amendments to the city zoning ordinance, um, regarding the R-one, R-two, and R-three zones, um, regarding lot widths, lot coverage, setbacks, minimum floor area, and accessory dwellings. That was approved at the August fourth city council meeting with a vote of eight to one. Um, as far as, let's see, Board of Zoning Appeals, they heard the case for BZA twenty-three dash twenty-five, which was Huffer Memorial Children's- Which was Huffer Memorial Children's Center and Longfellow Pre-K. To allow a daycare center special use known as Huffer Memorial Children's Center at two thousand North Elgin Street. Muncie, Indiana and Longfellow Pre-K located at seventeen hundred North Elgin Street. Um that was approved at the B Z A June twenty-sixth meeting with a vote of four to zero.
Okay. Uh Director's Report.
Director's Report, I gave you our um statistical update that I normally do. I'm gonna kind of go through this quickly so we can get to some other things. Um we are looking at permits um filed through the end of July. Um a total four hundred and sixty-eight permits for a total collected revenue of a hundred and four thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and nine cents. Inspections completed, um sorry, there I forgot to change that to July, but that should be inspections completed through July. We, um Tom is at a total of eight hundred and ninety-nine. Land use and development cases, um we've got, let's see, between B Z A, Plan Commission, Platte subdivision of V R C. We're sitting at city three sixty-three cases, um thirty-nine for the city and twenty-four for the county. Um an update on our pond ordinance, we had a second hearing committee meeting for our pond ordinance. We went over um all the things that we discussed in the first one. Um did some edits, made some changes, got some input from um several more people that were included. Um so our employee Liz has been working hard on that. She has completed all those edits and updates. Um we do believe the copy is now ready for legal, so we are gonna be sending that out. Um and then that should be um close to being complete soon. Um as an update, um for the ADA Transition Plan, Delaware County is updating the ADA Transition Plan. That is required in order for the county to receive any federal funding. So it's very important. It's um supposed to be updated every three years and an annual report given every year. So we have been working with a consulting firm that's doing that update. We've actually um are kind of almost completed. We've received a draft of that. We've held our public um input meetings and that should be wrapped up at the end of next week. Um solar update, the meeting date and time for the special meeting of this committee to hear the proposed solar amendment ordinance. Has been set, so that is next week, Tuesday, August twelfth, six P M. Um the doors will open at five fifteen. Board members, you guys can get there whenever you would like. Um our office will be there early to set up, um so you can let us know. Feel free to arrive whenever you you would like. Um Justice Center Auditorium located thirty-one hundred South Tillitsen Avenue. We have approved as this board to use the alternate conduct of an individual hearing rules. So I attached those again for your reference. I have gotten a couple of questions on those. Brandon's answered a couple of questions on those, um so we thought maybe it would be beneficial just to go over the special rules again. Um with this committee to make sure everyone was on the same page. Um. Number one says, anyone wishing to speak on a matter is required to sign up to speak either in support or opposition. And must do so prior to the beginning of the meeting. Um so we've had a couple of questions on that. You must sign up for yourself. You must be the one signing up. You must be present. Um and we will have plenty of staff there to direct people to where these sign up sheets are. Um had a couple of people ask if they could sign up for somebody else, if somebody else was running running late. Um and the answer to that is no, because we are basing the time given on the number of people that sign up. Um so if we let a bunch of people sign up for people that aren't there, that's going to affect the time. Um so you do have to be present and sign up for yourself in order to speak. Um once the sign up sheets are complete, we will then see how many people signed up in support. And how many people signed up um in opposition and divide the time accordingly. So each side should have an hour and depending on how many people sign up, that will determine. How long those people get to speak as an individual, um no less than one minute, um no more than three minutes. And that will be um assigned accordingly, but we will not know that until the signups are complete. Any questions on that and?
Yeah, I got one. Yeah, they won't be allowed to, say they only talk a minute, they won't be allowed to give to somebody else.
Correct. That's on here as well. They cannot give up time to another person. Yeah, so you can't have ten people sign up and say, I wanna give and all of them say, I wanna give my time to Mr. X and then Mr. X talk for thirty minutes.
That's what they did the last time.
This one they weren't allowed to. Now now an attorney is different and that that's kind of in here as well. An attorney is different.
But they're still limited to sixty minutes. Anybody speaking in favor or anybody speaking against, that that whole group's limited to sixty minutes?
The whole group, yes.
Right.
Now, an attorney is is gets a little bit of different time, so so that doesn't cut out of that sixty minutes.
Understand.
That works out, that works out.
They do. And then each side has a five-minute rebuttal.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes, each side has a five-minute rebuttal. Now, how this worked last time is they opened it up and said, hey, here's the five-minute rebuttal. And people that wanted to speak came up and got in a line. We did not run out of the five minutes on either side last time, I believe. Um so if there is a large number that would like to speak in rebuttal, um it's kind of on a first come, first served basis. I don't know how that would be handled, Mr. Murphy, if they run out and somebody that would like to provide a rebuttal didn't get a chance to.
I think my view is we have to strictly enforce the rules that we've set.
Mm-hmm.
Five minutes hits, it's you're done. Maybe finish your thought as as we sometimes do, but five minutes and done.
So you have to.
But please be respectful and don't trample each other.
Yes, yes, don't don't push people over to get in line.
I'd like to make a couple of comments about the facility use on that day, so um the commissioners are responsible for that facility. And we had a fire inspection recently and the upper seating at the Justice Center and the auditorium is closed. So nobody will be allowed to sit in the upper seating. And I will let this board know that when we start the meeting, if there's anybody up there, I'm gonna ask them, you know, through the microphone to come down. And I would ask the president if he would not start the meeting until people complied with, you know, not sitting in the upper deck. Also, that front parking lot, it's mostly visitor right now. Uh the south lot's closed. We're putting in two new storm inlets and then we're gonna mill and pave and restripe. I hope it's open by the twelfth, but it may be closed, but you can still park in the north lot. And then the new mental health facility that's there to the north, you can park there. And then in the back lot, we'll have the gate open that day. Uh there's a there's a gate, an arm that goes down that prevents people from going in and out. But we'll have it open so people can park in the back. So there still should be plenty of parking, but that front south lot may still be uh under repair.
Okay, and we will prepare for the um upper deck seating. We'll make some signs. Um I'll check with the Justice Center to see if they can somehow block that off prior.
So Don Chambers has that assignment.
Okay.
And so if you want to do something, you might check with Mr. Chambers. He should already be in progress for that.
Okay.
Are there gonna be any um police presence there?
Yes, we have asked for that as well.
Yeah, it was uh the last time we was there, I mean, they really said some rude stuff. You know, when we had children in the office.
Yeah.
They never did a thing.
Um yeah, I we have requested, we're having the meeting there due to volume. And also due to having the police presence there as well. Um so I have specifically spoken with the um with them about those rules. Chris will go, Mr. Smith will go over um the rules at the beginning of the meeting, asking people not to interrupt when a speaker is speaking. Um no vulgarity, um no foul language, um anything like that, you can be asked to be removed. Um so I have relayed to the um Sheriff's Department that if we need someone removed. Um they have said that they will remove that person as for us, so.
And to clarify, if a group has an attorney speak, they have sixty minutes total.
If thirty, thirty. An attorney can speak for no more than thirty minutes.
And then that would leave thirty minutes for the rest of the side or do they have an additional hour?
I think the attorney gets thirty minutes.
And that is outside of that total sixty minutes. Yeah. So the attorney does need to submit the names of the people they're representing. So if an attorney is representing five people, they get to represent those five people for their three minutes. It's gonna be fifteen minutes. So in order to get the maximum thirty, they have to be representing enough people. That those end of if those individuals were speaking, they would reach that thirty.
And then we are considering the ordinance that was uh presented by the commissioners that day. So anybody speaking in favor of, to be clear, are they speaking in favor of the ordinance or in favor of solar?
We're, yeah, solar.
Well, in favor of the amendments that the commissioners have made.
So they're really speaking in favor of the amendments to the ordinance, not that they're for solar or against solar. Which is a little bit different than what we've talked about before, so I just wanna be clear.
So last year we did, we did for solar and against solar because some people said, I'm for solar. But I'm against this ordinance or I'm against solar, but I'm for this ord- and some people are are. In support of one, two, three, four, five, six of the ordinance, but they're in opposition of seven, eight, nine, ten of the ordinance. So that one's hard.
It's a little tricky. Of course, last time we were considering it, the ordinance altogether, okay? This time we're considering the the amendments that the commissioners have made and whether whether we wanna accept those or amend those or reject those.
Okay.
Four, four is really going to be for those people that are in support of the amendments. Uh against is gonna be those that are against the amendments. On the other hand, it is complicated. And so, you know, we may get some people with mixed views on different points and. Uh I don't think we can necessarily cut those people off because they're a mixed bag, so to speak. Yeah, it's almost they they have to determine how they're gonna use their time.
Right.
And whether they're gonna, they want to, they're speaking, can't really. They're gonna speak in favor of solar, they can speak in favor of solar, correct? I mean, it's their time to speak as to what they think they're.
So maybe that could be the the instruction to say, look, we're here to talk about the amendments to the solar ordinance. If you're in favor of those of those amendments, you we want you to speak during the favorable. If you're in favor of solar, speak during the favorable. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think from just from the public input that I have received, um some, you know, just over the the past couple of years. Um we have a much more clear-cut group that is for solar and against solar. Than we do have a clear-cut group that is for ordinance, against ordinance, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just think on that day, we need to be clear with our instructions.
We we do, because I think if we say for the ordinance, against the ordinance that's being proposed, the amendments that are being proposed. I think we're gonna have a very heavy against, and I'm just saying from the comments I've received so far.
Is it um possible to provide copies of the proposed amendments? Um and possibly address in the preamble by the president what is and is not being voted on? Would we be able to redirect someone if they were opposing an ordinance that is not being voted on or that's not covered by the amendments?
So the way that the amendment is laid out is that the entire ordinance that was enacted before. And placed on moratorium is being replaced by the entire proposed ordinance that's out there now. Um it is posted on a website, so this the community members have been able to see it. Um but it's not like text here was changed, it's not like a redline copy of this text was changed to this. Because it's significantly different. I mean, even the the length of the document is significantly different. So.
Yes, I would, I would, if the board would prefer to handle it for or against solar, we could do that. I I don't think there'd be any problem with us doing it. It might simplify things. Just understand, though, that what the board is voting on is really whether to replace the existing solar ordinance with the amended solar ordinance. So maybe it would make it simpler for the public and and this board, if we had public to sign up for solar or against solar, it's really up up to the board, I guess.
Yeah, and in twenty twenty-three, we had some people that were like, hey, I'm, I wanna give you a little bit of information about solar. I support it. And they kind of went over um that information and then they said, but I don't like this aspect of the ordinance. Or I do like this aspect and I don't like this. So so they will get that in there.
Yeah. Yeah, all they know is solar, yes or no, right?
Yeah, there was some general speakers that just came saying. I wanna speak in support of solar and I wanna speak in opposition of solar, so.
And maybe that's the, that's the. That's the message, right? Yes, we you you may speak in favor of solar or against solar, but that's not what we are deciding. What we are deciding is the ordinance.
Right.
That's right. So you're free to speak pro-solar without mentioning the ordinances, but we're, we are focused on those ordinance. Or amendments.
Okay.
Is that kind of the consensus of the board that we prefer to have speakers handled that way?
That'd be my opinion.
I I think.
I agree.
I think.
I think it would simplify. I just think that it might be a little confusing.
Sure.
Voting on the, I I agree with you. We are considering the amendments, but people won't necessarily be speaking specifically in favor or against the amendments. They're gonna be talking about solar for the most part. A few people will, yeah, right?
Sure, well, let's uh let's do the sign up sheets pro, pro and against then.
Okay.
Solar generally and. Just understand we'll probably have some people with some mixed views and.
Sure.
We can't necessarily enforce a, you know, we said pro and you're against type of thing on on these speakers.
Right, I do, we do need to keep our eye out, though, for intentional abuse. So somebody that, you know, will play that confused game and tie up some time, tie up sixty minutes for it. When, you know, when the the people, somebody against it might tie up some for time or vice versa. We'll have to watch for that. And then we scheduled this, we took great care and concern to schedule on a day when everybody could be present, right? So right now, all seven, barring, you know, significant illness, all seven board members should be there on the twelfth. Is that correct?
Oh, nine, did we?
I'm sorry.
Did we get a yes from everyone?
Initially, when we put the call out, it was yes from everyone.
Okay, yeah. It's important. I encourage everybody to, you know, barring significant illness or some family emergency, I hope everybody shows up.
Yeah.
I'm a little slow, all right? So I'm sitting here and I'm trying to digest all this. In relationship to the ordinances, and I think this is what you gave us for sent out to the house. Is that what this is with these lines and so forth?
Now, now, those that are in your packet that you got physical copies of, those are emails that I received.
Right, but I'm talking about all this stuff here.
That was sent in an email, though. That is, that is somebody choosing to send in their suggestions.
Okay.
And they have kind of redlined the ordinance as to what their their suggestions are.
So can you get me a copy of this ordinance thing?
Mm-hmm, have they, yeah. It 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 is, it was in your packet, but it's separate from those emails.
Okay.
Um you should have the, yeah, you have the proposed ordinance. You have a copy of the previous ordinance before the moratorium to compare.
That was Marta Moody's thing, right?
Yes, and then you have the minutes from the November twenty twenty-three meeting.
Okay.
To kind of show you how that process went.
All right.
Um some of you were there, um but obviously some of you were not. That was live streamed, so you could look that up too, just to kind of see that if you would like to. That was live streamed, so you could look that up too, just to kind of see that if you would like to.
So, okay, so we're talking about this ordinance. And so when that's all said and done, uh let's say, uh the ordinance passes, let's say that hypothetically. Then does that mean we don't have to get back together again and talk about solar? It's a done deal and solar is in operation, is that?
So the way this works is both the commissioners and the plan commission ultimately have to agree on this ordinance. So, uh the commissioners have passed an amendment.
Okay.
Uh, our options are either to accept their amendment, make an amendment to their amendment, in which case it would go back to the commissioners.
Uh-huh.
Or reject their agreement.
Okay.
Those are, those are the options before the board, okay? So once, if there's an, if there's an agreement, if if the commissioners amendments are accepted by this board, then it is, that is the ordinance and solar is in business.
If if we, if we give a favorable recommendation, it goes back to the commissioners.
They have to come apply, correct? They have to come.
Yes, and they they say yes, if we give it an unfavorable, still goes back to the commissioners and they, they can take that, but they don't have to, and they could accept the changes, but they don't have to. So the final word lies with the commissioners. After, say it is, there is a solar ordinance that's enacted, any solar project is still considered a special use. So for a special use, this board has to hear it. And then we give a, you give a favorable or unfavorable recommendation, and then it goes to the B Z A. So every project would have to go through that process in order to be approved for their project.
And the B Z A gets involved with that.
The B Z A is the final vote of approval or not approval.
They're not involved with this, this is between this uh commission and the commission, uh county commissioners.
Correct, yeah.
Now, do we approve this, this document as a whole? Or can you do it like, like piecemeal, can you do like, okay, let's take these? This, this section, yes, we don't, we're good with that, we don't have any suggestions, everybody's fine with that. This section, well, we'd like to change this part, this section we're good with, or is it an all or nothing? That's what this meeting's for, correct? We make an amendment, we can make an amendment to the amendment that sends it goes back to the.
Yeah, you can make an amendment, ultimately, how how the board wants to handle each section of the ordinances is up to the board. But really, there's three possibilities, there's accept, accept the commissioner's as is, reject the commissioner's ordinance, or there's some number of amendments that you guys choose that you wish to make.
And that goes back to the commissioners.
Right.
And in twenty twenty-three, we did do it by sections, um somewhat, because if we don't, and say we discuss that, you discuss this for an hour and you've come up with twenty things you would like changed, when you make that motion, you have to include all those in your motion. So if you do it section by section, it's a little easier to say, hey, we want this one change in section A, let's go ahead and approve that. We're on now section B, we have two, let's approve or not approve those. That way, when you get to the end of it, you know what your changes, you've kept track of what your changes are so far.
Let me ask a question on that, is all that gonna happen before they speak?
No, it would be following, following public comment.
Yeah.
And whatever discussions we have, questions we have, we're talking amongst ourselves, they're still there.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and and you can ask certain speakers to come back up and answer a certain question, just kind of, you know, like here. Um, even though they've had their time, you can still ask certain speakers questions, so. And that does not count towards the full time.
Who's gonna be the one to decide if somebody needs to be?
The president.
But we can make a recommendation, right? But it's the president's decision.
My, my, um, I'm hoping to, to hear what you all would like to have, but mine, in my head, I have, okay, somebody's over speaking to somebody or shouting over somebody or shouting down somebody. You know, in my, in my mind, I have like, maybe I'm asking them to be quiet, giving them one opportunity to to sit back down and to stop, and if they don't, I'm asking some deputy or whoever to please remove that person.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
If somebody's cursing or using vulgar language directed at anybody or, you know, to me, that's, that's a pretty straightforward, just, I'm just gonna ask you. If you're dropping cuss words as you're speaking, maybe that's a little different, or if you're directing it at somebody, that's, that's kind of a no-brainer to me.
I believe you should set those expectations at the beginning of the meeting.
Yeah.
Go ahead and set the ground rules.
I kinda talked with with Kylie a little bit about that, having some kind of.
What your expectations are, yeah.
That expectation is.
Yeah, you tell people what they should not be doing, you can say, these things you will be asked to leave. And then as an adult, if they choose to do those things, they know that they will be asked to leave.
Well, being there two years ago, and there's some of you sitting here that was, that was a, a real mess. And it was a real mess from the fact, and and what I'm about to say, let it fall where it falls, uh, a lack of leadership from the uh authorities, police authorities to calm things down. They allowed a free-for-all to take place. And there was no sense in it. There's no sense in people being allowed to swear at other people in a meeting like that
Mm-hmm.
and call them everything under the sun and maybe even follow them outside because we went out in groups to our vehicles. It was that kind of an atmosphere, you know? And um, I spent thirteen years in a classroom. And day one, I laid the law down. And here's the line, you wanna cross it, here's the punishment you're gonna get. And Chris, I think, that's what you're gonna have to do out there, is lay the law down. I mean, be, if people may not agree, but you're gonna have to be very stern when it starts. Say, this is how we're gonna conduct the meeting, and that first person that you have thrown out, that'll set the tone. Because there will be somebody thrown out, sure, I can promise you that, and you're gonna need the cooperation of the police. Because they stood there, like I said, I don't care where it falls, but they stood there and let it go on. They did not, they did not act like a, a police officer.
Is um, is the sheriff the overseer of this meeting, or is it the police, city police, or is it both?
It's the Sheriff's Department.
Okay.
Yeah, and another thing that happened at the twenty twenty-three meeting that I'm going to um ask that not happen this year, we had people that actually came up onto the stage where us at the, as the plan commission had to say, hey, hey, what are you doing? And and one person actually said they were, they needed that to use that as an exit. So I'm also requesting that there be officers at the entrance to the stage and none of the, nobody be allowed to come up onto the stage to talk to a board member, so. Because that happened last time.
Yeah, that, that's why I asked. Got out of control and I got. So, you know, I think, but, I think, it's not that they didn't do that, I don't know, I don't think they knew exactly what to do.
Yeah.
You know, I think that their conversation all, all out on the forehead, all out.
Any other concerns or questions? Um, another thing that I wanted to mention, um the, this board, our September meeting, um, our September meeting is September fourth, that's our next regular meeting. Um, we will hold that at the Emergency Management Agency Building. Um, that date is during budget hearing time for county council. And sometimes those go very long and sometimes those go into the evening. So rather than have to worry about waiting to the last minute to be able to have our meeting or not, we are just scheduling ahead of time to have it at the Emergency Management Agency Building.
Where's, where's that at?
That's uh two ten South Jefferson, that is where the nine one one call center is, yeah. We actually planned on doing that last year and um for some reason, no business got filed for that meeting, so it was canceled anyway, but. Well, of course, we'll remind you guys.
I'll be out of town that, that night.
Nate?
What? Nate, I'm gonna be out of town. Oh, sweet, I can't wait.
We're giving you a month's notice.
Sweet. Okay, any, any other questions?
This year, I think you.
Comments?
We kinda, we kinda clapped when you said that.
Anything else? Turned down.